I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, foundation, sanctified, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tyler, the roll call?
Okay. Counselor Bowie's excused. Counselor Bickford?
Yeah.
Counselor Cody?
Here.
Counselor LaRochelle?
Here.
Counselor Lund?
Here.
Counselor Mason?
Here.
Counselor Palmanoff?
Here.
Okay, first item, Tyler.
There is no public hearing. We'll begin with the consent agenda. There's been a request to remove the term limits for the Board of Assessment Review, and that will be taken up under appointments. So the Order 2011-31 is to approve the minutes of March 1, 2011.
All those in favor?
Excellent, so move.
Okay, yeah. Does that have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? And opposed?
Order passed, six-zero.
And next item?
Under Council Orders, Resolutions, and Ordinances, Order 2011-32, Sign Ordinance Amendment, first reading.
This is just a simple change in relation to how often the electronic signs actually change and switch. The school and the town are, the only two in town are actually operating with, under the current ordinance. There's been a request that we change it to what you have in front of you, which is every 10 seconds versus what you have.
One minute before.
Right, one minute.
One minute, which is, people think it's too long.
Right. Why was it set at one minute? For any particular reason?
That was when I first got here, I think. I'm not quite sure.
We, if I remember right, we actually had the, the state was actually in town enforcing some of the sign ordinance, and until we actually came up with an ordinance ourself, the state basically overruled what we had, once we actually had an ordinance in place that we could actually control it. And as long as ours was as strict as what the state's was, we could actually be stricter, but we couldn't be more lenient. So I think that's where it fell into. One minute was actually just where it was a very safe area. I don't, I'm not sure what the state's lowest tolerance is, but if you are, drive by some and they flash, I mean, if you can count to 10 driving by, you're probably not going to see it switch, but if it's at two or three seconds, something that you can see the sign change three, four times as you're driving by is not 10 seconds, you know, so.
I think it had something to do with like flashing and that kind of.
Exactly.
Distractions.
Distractions, more quick.
Right, but I think one minute is probably too long, the way it is now.
Absolutely, because you can't, you can't.
Yeah, change it at all, really, right? It's basically just set permanently that way.
So just to understand this, the state's requirement on how often it cycles, is that one minute?
No. It was actually, ours was a lot more strict than what the state was at that point in time, I remember.
State's 20, state's 20 minutes absent a law.
All right, okay, so you can make it allowed to go faster changing than the state, but your 20 minutes, is it 20 minutes?
20 seconds.
20 seconds or 20 minutes?
20 minutes.
20 minutes, if you don't have your own ordinance, so you have to have your own ordinance to be, allow a more rapid change than 20 minutes, which is very long for a sign.
20 seconds.
So do we have any further discussion on this?
I think it's a good idea to change it.
Yeah, I think so. I think it helps local businesses to be able to change their signs more frequently than one minute.
Yep.
Any other comments from council? Anything from the public who wants to speak on this?
It'll be a public hearing.
Right, okay, there'll be a public hearing on this at our next reading before we vote on it. This is just our first reading. Okay. We don't actually need to vote on that, or do we? No, okay. All right, next item?
Is Order 2011-33, Lisbon Comprehensive Plan Update Amendment, first reading?
This is something that was a part of the process when, we've been going on for three years, making amendments to our ordinances, and also making some changes to the comprehensive plan, which has to go out to vote. The planning board has had quite a long conversation in these, and come up with what they think is what should be done. It's passed the planning board, and it's before you. The change in the land use, or in the comprehensive plan, is, the language is pretty simple right there. What they've done is they are looking to change some of the zoning areas along Route 9. It was recommended in the comprehensive plan that Route 9 be looked at becoming a commercial area with a new exit on, down in Sabates. There's been a lot of the people on Route 9 who live there that don't want to see that happen. There's been, we've had quite a few people attend the meeting board meetings. John can speak to it if you need any more, but that is one of the areas that they are looking to change. It has to be, before it becomes an ordinance, I think this is the process, you have to make that change in the land, in the comprehensive plan. Some other things that they're looking at, which you had in your packets, was changing some of the zonings over on Route 9, along with the discussion they had about limiting the development on Route 9 and keeping it more residential and rural, protecting the agricultural land, was trying to focus the building and commercial development on Route 9. We have currently one business park that still has not gotten off the ground. We have another one that's being looked at, and actually, you have one from quite a few years ago, where Carl Houston had property. So we have a lot of developable land on Route 9, which is where, huh?
196.
196, no. I'm sorry, 196.
Right.
And that's where they want to try to focus the development versus Route 9. So these changes are focused on that. John and Mike, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
We never really accepted our comprehensive plan yet, have we, Steve? That has never been.
That was done before I was here, 2007. You accepted it and sent it off to the state planning office to get approved, and they approved it.
But we never incorporated it into our ordinances. We were supposed to go through.
That's what we're doing.
Right, we'd kind of have to go through every ordinance and try to change them over time, and that's the goal is.
You've already adopted throughout the three years, quite a few changes to your ordinance is to comply with your comprehensive plan. AvCOG and the planning board and Mike have been working on that since I've been here. So the land use, the zoning changes, I think were some of the last parts of that, and it's just gone back and forth, along with the wellhead protection, which is, the planning board approved the wellhead protection, and then Roger Terrio is just doing some minor language changes, so it hasn't come before you yet.
Well, the changes in the land use map are more than just language changes, Steve. We're changing a considerable piece of property on Route 196 from general residential to commercial, and it happens to sit directly over our aquifer, and I'm strongly against that. I don't think that's a proper thing to be doing for this town. Not only is it setting over our aquifer, but it's also what is considered spot zoning. When you take a particular piece of property and you zone it because there is an intent to do something with the piece of property, other than what was in the comprehensive plan. And I would like to see more discussion on that with the council before we proceed on that.
I have a question. Does that commercial area that we're talking about on 196, does that abut other commercial areas?
Yes.
It does? Okay, so it's not in the middle of a residential zone, it's right up against a commercial zone already? Is that correct?
It's an extension.
Right, okay.
In the previous.
Took the commercial zone and moved it across the street.
Okay.
And, yeah.
Certainly, fine.
Was the past use of this property commercial, in a sense?
It was the Dragon pit, so.
It was a commercial, it was industrial commercial for how many years, since, long time?
And if you look at, when you get a chance to look at the ordinance changes, there's, we've gone back and forth, changing the requirements to make sure we protect the aquifer. That's been the main focus, of making sure this is done right. It will not be allowed to have industrial use there. It will be a business park with containment areas that would have to be put in place if they have any type of fuel or things like that. Have an ESPA plan in place, so it's not going to be industrial, something that will endanger the aquifer.
When this property was discussed in the, when we did the comprehensive plan, Mr. Maloney brought in a discussion that we should try to stay away from our aquifer at all expense. That was what, that we should not do. And that is why the comprehensive plan steering committee didn't look to making any of that property commercial. And now that a business may have something intended for that property, that comes under spot zoning, which is illegal. And I think that this council needs to look at that much closer than that.
Any other comments from council?
Maybe, maybe we just get an overview of, if there is a planning board people here to explain why they actually voted in favor of it? I mean, there has to be some general consensus of the discussion, and why it moved forward?
But actually, I emailed John Maloney today to discuss this spot zoning, and in his opinion, I don't know.
Sure, I'll give it to the chair anyways.
Shorty, is the microphone.
I'm John Porth, in 1 Sammerbrook Street, Lisbon.
I am the planning board chair.
Thank you, John. What was the question that you raised, Fern?
He's asking how the planning board came to this decision and why.
What happened was, we had several workshops discussing proposed ordinances and things coming up. We had meetings with the public. One of those meetings was at the Lisbon Community School last year. Actually, you spoke at that, Roger. And during that, there were a lot of issues raised, and the planning board took that to heart and really set to working to make things right and get the comprehensive plan in balance with the zoning ordinance and the zoning maps. Part of the discussion at that time, while we were discussing the maps, was Dragon Pit and its position next to a commercial zone and the potential use of that property. Since you have zoning, I'm sorry, ordinance in place that will protect the wellhead, we did not see a problem with extending the commercial zone across the street. It abuts an existing commercial zone, and it would make the land more valuable to somebody. That was the whole thinking of changing it to commercial.
Thank you, John.
And John Maloney and Fergley were involved heavily in those discussions, and we took their advisement and followed their lead.
Anything further? Do you have anything further you want to add, John? Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate that.
I mean, there's definitely a concern, even back from when I first got on the council, the idea of the concern from the water department of keeping the water and water supply safe up in that area. Now, I've got to refer back to the planning board, hopefully, you know, reviewed it and looked at all the details, and with the information that's put forth the last couple of years, I think that they're actually doing a fairly decent job as far as for the wellhead protection. I mean, I would only hope that, you know, that everything be put in place to actually protect it, but on the other hand, we want to make sure we make good use of the land also. If, you know, our 196 resources are limited, if you drive up and down 196 looking for areas that we maybe expand our tax bases, it's pretty far and few between, so if we can do it safely, I don't think it'd be, to me, it'd be one thing if we're tearing down a bunch of houses to build up a commercial park, but it's basically was a commercial industry before, so again, it's just in the hope that it would actually be done correctly, that's all. Anything that, anything that, once this is actually deemed commercial, anything that was to be done after that would still have to go back to planning board and be approved and go through all the proper steps to make sure that they were, you know, doing anything.
I have a question. It was commercial property at one time. When was that distinction taken away?
I don't know. It's before my time.
Mike, do you know?
I've been living there 34 years, up around the corner from the Dragon pit, and I think this stopped being the Dragon pit, well, I'd say eight, 10 years ago.
So they took the commercial distinction away, then?
I think it was probably grandfathered in before zoning started in 78.
Okay, I see.
Yeah. Back then, there was no zoning, so. Any further questions from council?
Okay, I just couldn't remember either, because I know it was there at one time, but.
Yes, certainly. Could you come to the podium so people can hear you?
Mike Cody, Cody Enforcement Officer. Even though the Dragon pit will be zoned commercial, you've got to keep in mind that the wellhead requirements will override the commercial requirement. So it will be very well regulated. So even though it becomes a commercial zone, that doesn't make it automatically useful as a commercial use, okay? And any commercial uses going in there will be more regulated by the wellhead protection.
So would I be corrected, a lot of normal commercial uses would be banned because of that?
Correct. There won't be just any business that can go in there, whether it is a commercial zone or not.
Okay, so if I, you know, I couldn't build a junkyard in there if I wanted to.
Oh, sir, you can't.
Yes, go ahead, Roger.
The one thing that I just want to bring to everybody's attention, and I can't stress it enough, if you take the maps and overlay them, this property that we're talking about sets directly over the aquifer for the drinking water for the town of Lisbon. So if there was a spill or anything of that nature, you wouldn't even have eight hours to intercept it before it got to the aquifer. The reason that I'm stressing this is if we pollute the aquifer, the only place that we can get water for this town is Lake Auburn, off of Lewiston. I don't know how you guys like Lewiston water, but it's not something that I'm in favor of. It's very, very important that we take care of that aquifer for the town of Lisbon. And the intent for that property may be a real good intent at this time, but things change. And in 20 years from now, if that intent changes, the people are still going to need good drinking water in the town of Lisbon. And that's why it's so important that I, and I'm stressing, to take care of that aquifer. And any discussions that we had during the comprehensive plan, I was told, and the board was told repeatedly, to protect the aquifer under that property. That's why we stayed away from it. And now we're going back and changing to do something with this property. As we know, over the last week or so, things happened way out of our control by looking at our friends in Japan. Accidents, catastrophes happen. And if you pollute that water, that's your water for Lisbon, Lisbon Center, and Lisbon Falls. And I just would, as a counselor, I'm not going to let up until everybody in this town knows that this is very serious, what we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Would you like to address that?
I'm Don Fellows from somewhere in Lisbon, Fairview Drive. I understand the point on keeping the water. I like clean water, too. And that's why the wellhead protection ordinance was developed, so that we could be very restrictive on what happens to the ground. Unless you're going to take all of the land which encompass, under that, is encompassed underneath that aquifer, and tell people that you can't build anything there, or you can't develop anything there, then you risk that area becoming polluted from anybody, not just under that property. And from what I'm hearing, you essentially would want to turn that land into a wasteland with nothing there, and I think that's a misuse of the property. I think our wellhead protection was developed so that we could protect, and that there are other areas of town that have wellhead protection, and there was a lot of, a lot of things to overcome with people who found themselves in wellhead protection, and a lot of restrictions that go onto that property because of it. So I think if we were to develop that property, and again, it has to come before us as a site plan review, so the planning board, and I'm on the planning board, it would be very scrutinized, much more than the property that's already there. And I think we're doing the right thing.
Thank you, Don. Mr. Fillmore?
Larry Fillmore from Lisbon. How many residents are impacted by this property that you're changing the zoning on?
I don't have that information.
Is it one person, or is it 10 people? Somebody in this room that has all this knowledge should be able to come up with that answer.
Nobody lives there.
I mean, is there one owner?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, it's not like five or six people, or there's one owner.
Right now, it's one owner.
Okay, so you're single zoning, sole zoning that one piece of property. The second thing is, it's a buffer right now for our water supply. So what you're telling me in the town of Lisbon is that you're willing to risk our water supply that affects all of us on money, because you're going to turn it into some kind of commercial use? I personally don't think that I want me, my kids, or my grandkids to be, run the risk of having this. It's a good buffer right now for our water supply. And our water supply and our safety of the town people is very critical, or should be very critical, to you people in making your decision. So I think it's very important that you look at this very carefully, because you're putting a lot of people at risk, and therefore, you're going to have all kinds of problems. Now, I'm not saying that nothing's going to happen, but it only takes one time. And then who's going to pay for all the water coming in to town? We've got to pay for it somehow. Who's going to pay that? The people who develop the property, or the taxpayers of Lisbon? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fillmore.
If I'm not mistaken, doesn't the aquifer, John, extend all the way up to Longchamp's? So there's commercial development all up through that area? And Longchamp's has an approved subdivision or commercial site already over the aquifer, which is also very heavily regulated. So it's not just the Dragon site that is the aquifer. The aquifer is huge, and it encompasses quite a distance, all the way to the Lewiston line. So it's, and you have commercial development all through there already.
You also have Pine Knoll sitting right behind the well.
And there's also industrial.
If it goes still there, you're not in any better shade.
And there's an industrial zone right across the river there, where main electronics used to be, so.
Which is heavily regulated.
Right.
If I remember correctly, when we discussed Longchamp's and gave approval for that, that some of the regulations there were more strict than what the state even expected us to do. And I do remember discussing that the aquifer does stretch that far, so you've got possible danger over it now, anyway, so.
All right, any further discussion on that issue?
Can I say something?
Certainly.
Ken Wells, the Water Department Commissioner. First, is this comprehensive plan include wellhead protection? Or is it two different parts?
This change specifically we're making doesn't touch the wellhead protection, it's just the, we're talking about the commercial zone here, which would be, you know, overlaps with the wellhead protection, so it'd be more restrictive than a normal commercial zone because of that wellhead protection.
Okay, so we're still working on a wellhead protection plan?
The wellhead protection ordinance has been approved by the planning board. Roger Terrio is making just some minor language changes in it before it comes before the council.
And I would appreciate.
And we hope to see that, hopefully, by the April 19 meeting.
I was wondering if you could give the Water Department a copy of that, so we could review it, at the same time you guys are reviewing it beforehand, so if we have questions, we can come to you to express our concerns on this. And the other thing I'd like to point is, the reason for, the closer you are to the wellhead, the more it's going to affect the water quality. The farther you are away, it's going to be filtered, but it will take more time to get to where we're at, so we can protect it. So that's why Longchamp's was zoned for it, even though it's the same aquifer, it's just you have more of a chance, more timeframe for that water to get from point A to point B to the wellhead, so.
Thank you, Ken. Would you like to take the podium, sir?
Pete Reed, Route 9. On the proposed changes on Route 9, now, is this going to keep the status quo the way it is on Route 9? Or is it going to have some residential, some industrial, or what's it going to do? Or is it going to stay just the same as it is today?
What they're proposing is up where the old, was it Lewski? Changing that back to a general residential two zone, right, Mike?
Rural open space.
Rural open space two. So which is already, right now, where most of Route 9 is rural open space two, above Upland, right?
No, it's, the whole Route 9 corridor is rural open space one, they call it.
Okay.
The rural open space twos are up on Upland and up by Edgerton Road. So the whole corridor up there is rural open space, as it was before.
And it's going to stay that way under this law?
You get to get away with it.
So rural open space two, am I correct, is that more restrictive, that you can't build like subdivisions in open space two? Doc, can you see the podium just for a moment here, so you can answer my question?
The rural open space two areas are zones that were designated specifically for the preservation of fine lands and for agricultural use, and there were larger tracts of land, and that's why they were designated as specific areas they're in, so.
Okay, so Route 9 area would remain rural open space one under this proposal?
Yes, correct.
Isn't there a portion of Route 9 that's been actually changed to commercial? Isn't it up to a certain range in the past, you know?
Mr. Niesel's property was commercial, right?
In the, not in the actual zone, just in the comprehensive plan, it showed that.
Yeah, the beginning portion of Route 9 was designated as a general residential zone, which would allow commercial uses, correct.
Okay.
But beyond that, it's all rural open space corridor, so.
Why did they do away with the commercial space as indicated in the comprehensive plan at the corner of Upland and Route 9?
Because everyone that came to the planning board meetings and/or workshop, the majority of the people that came to those, their request was to do away with the commercial. They didn't want the commercial zone in those areas. And after all the workshops and planning board meetings we've had, it was decided that all the surrounding people and the brothers didn't want that there, so it was eliminated.
Thank you, Mike. Dot?
Dorothy Fitzgerald, resident of Lisbon Falls. Several things. Number one, your proposed water tower on Upland Road, is that gonna require a zoning change?
I don't know. I have not talked to the Water Department about that. That would be something they'd have to bring to us, I think.
We don't know where it's gonna go first, so. They haven't made a decision.
Right, I realize that. It's, it's still in the works. But that's neither here nor there. I said, if it goes on Upland Road, is it going to require a zoning change? Is that part of what this is all about?
I don't think this is what it's about, but. Do you know, Mike, what the zoning requirements are for that?
To be honest with you, I, in the rural open space, it allows for towers, communications, and also probably a water tower. So, and it is zoning rural open space. I don't believe the zone will have to be changed to have that here.
Thank you, Mike.
Something else that's concerned me, when we have town council meetings and proposed amendments, changes to ordinances, comprehensive planning, it would be very helpful to the people sitting here to have a copy of your proposed changes, so that we can see what you're, you know, we hear you discussing pro-con, whatever, but we don't have a clue what's going on. And yes, I was at the public hearing on the zoning changes on Route 9 up at the LES. I heard all of the arguments, pro and con, and I was there, you know. There weren't an awful lot, yes, there was. There, there were a lot of people there. There was a lot of controversy. But it would be helpful if we could have copies of your proposed zone changes, so that we could be enlightened. Thank you.
Thank you, Dot. Steve, would it be possible to put that up on the website anywhere, so that people, if they wanna see what we're looking at at home, rather than have to come to a meeting and, you know, they haven't seen it until five minutes before?
And we'll have maps at, when we do the public hearing section, so you'll be able to see what the recommended changes are, and so, that's what the public hearing's for.
Yeah. Yeah, if we get that up on the website, you know, before the meeting would be nice, so people have a chance to look at it.
Yep.
Only one problem with that, put it on the website. Other people don't have websites.
Yes.
Okay.
You know, well, on the school, I'm on the school board, and we come in, and we have, we got stuff that's gonna be controversial. We have handouts to give to the public, so they can see it. That, that plan should've been printed up on enough things, so you had something here to give out to the public coming in. Website, website.
That's for the public.
Website tonight, but not all of us have websites.
Good. I understand you, Pete, and I just can't travel back in time and put it out there tonight. And that's all I'm just saying is, for our next reading, I'd rather have it out there on the, you know, website. One option, if you don't have a computer at home, is go down to the library and use the web, the computer down there. They can help you out.
I don't mind if I'm to run the library, if you use the website.
I'm trying to help you out, Peter.
Hope you're willing to get, to print some stuff and put it out here, so people can use it, and not, you know, get off your butts and do the job you're supposed to be doing.
All right, thank you, Pete.
Not sitting there talking.
Peter, this is the first.
Put some stuff out there for people to use, and not make excuses.
This is the first reading. The public hearing is the second meeting, where the public is supposed to weigh in, and, and we'll have the planner here to answer any public questions. That's what the second reading is for.
All right, so we don't need a vote on that, I'm correct? Okay, so next item, Twyla?
Is order 2011-34, Board of Assessment Review Ordinance Amendment.
This is just some recommended changes that our attorney has recommended, that we didn't have any terms, limits, or term for the people on the Board of Assessment Review. This is just some language to, which you have in your packets there, to specify three-year terms, two-year terms, one-year terms, stagger them, so it just wasn't in the original ordinance.
Do we have any discussion from council on that?
Okay.
That would just fall in line with the, with the planning board and the.
Yeah.
Hill's board.
Yeah. Three-year terms, two-year terms.
All right, any further discussion from council on that? All right, well, then we'll move on to the next item.
Is under Other Business, Finance Director's Report.
Wait, Twyla, I believe we need to do an A from the consent agenda. We moved over the.
Were you gonna do that under appointments down to?
Um, sure, yeah, if that makes sense down there, okay.
Okay, that's why I put it, but, all right.
Okay.
Hello. Jumping right into revenues, excise taxes approximately 57% collected. Last year, for the month of February, we took in $68,000 in excise tax. This year, we've taken in $65,000 for the month. If you look at your report, you'll see $59,000. However, we had another $6,000 in rapid renewals that did not get recorded until March, so you'll see those on your next month's report, under the year-to-date column. With excise tax year-to-date, it looks like we might end up under-collected by upwards of $80,000. In trending, in order to meet our current budget, we would have to bring in around $131,000 per month to meet our budget. And even though collection increases beginning in March, historically, we have not collected over $130,000 in each of the months remaining. So it's looking like we'll be under-collected in excise tax. With state revenue sharing, we are 71% collected, with $77,000 coming in for February. Again, due to my time constraints with preparing the budget, this entry is posted in March, so you'll see this reflected in the year-to-date column in next month's report. Last year, at this time, we were only 48% collected on a budget of a million, so. As always, things are looking to be on track with collection, but we will continue to monitor this account through the remainder of the year. We are over 100% collected in our parks and recreation revenue. The month of February brought in another $1,600 in before and after-school care and the trecker playground programs that are run through the rec department, as well as six, another $650 for the winter-spring swim program. So the rec department is continuing to be busy. And as of February 28th, we were 61% collected on our total tax commitment for the year, which is better than we were at last, at this point last year, which was only 58%. Since then, the second half of the taxes were due, actually, today, and we've been busy at the front counter since last week, so all in all, things are looking up with tax collection. Do you have any questions remaining with revenues? Moving on to expenses, we are over-expended on legal charges. In public works, we spent $27,000 in the diesel gas charges for the month. Went to public works, expended another $38,000 for sand salt purchases, which is still favorable year-to-date. However, there's also outstanding encumbrances of $22,000, which will bring us to a current over-expenditure of $18,000 for the sand salt purchases. In addition, in February, we paid our MMA dues of around $8,000, and it actually over-expended the account by $55. But other than that, everything else looks to be right on track where we should be for this stage in the year. So unless you have other questions for me, that's my report.
Any questions from the council? Looks good to me.
When are we gonna get rid of MMA?
We talked about that. We'll have a discussion sometime, if you want to discuss that.
Well, are we going to discuss it?
Yeah, we can discuss what?
MMA, we can have it as a.
Well, it'll be a budget discussion. They're on a different year. They're on a calendar year versus fiscal year, so when we get to that part of the budget, we'll certainly discuss it.
Okay, next item?
The 2011, 2012 municipal and school budget presentations.
Yes, we'll go first, all right.
You're up, Rick.
Good evening. I'm Richard Green, Superintendent of Schools, Lisbon School Department. What Tracy is handing out to you this evening, I just quickly will go over. The first one is basically an overview that I put together, that I'll spend majority of my presentation on. The second and third parts are actually the updated subsidy charts, or subsidy sheets, and the budget warrant articles. Now, we have, for those that are in the audience, we have, in February, when we had our first budget meeting, we distributed copies of the subsidy sheets and warrant articles. What I'd like to do is, just for the town council and for members of the public, in the bottom left-hand corner, we have a date, and the date that we have on our current or most updated subsidy and warrant articles is March 10th. And so you guys have the revised ones, and I know there's some people in the public that may have the, the original ones. And since the original budgets, there have been some significant changes, and you'll see that in my overview. The first couple of things I wanted to focus on, and I presented this to the school committee last night, was the definition of, and being clear on what the definition of what a flat budget was, and then what a 0% on the local taxes budget was. And it has been made clear to the school department that we would be coming in with a 0% budget on the local taxes. And although there's, the numbers that I'm gonna give you tonight don't necessarily reflect that, right now, there are a lot of pieces that still need to fall in place between now and our referendum, and I'm, and I know I made it clear last year when I spoke, that I felt that if we made the cuts and we raised the local, we had to raise local taxes last year on the school side, but I felt that if we did that last year, that we would be able to come in this year with a 0% on the local taxes. And I'm feeling very confident that that's where we'll be. But a few things have to fall in place, and I'll go over those. The, one of the things I wanted to point out, and I commented on last night, and I wish Norma Wells was here, I'm not sure she's here, because I've been here for a number of years, and I know that in her, whenever we presented, she would always talk about the EPS, Essential Programs and Services formula, and she would always say how much we were over. And we have spent, over the last two years, we have spent a significant amount of time really looking at that EPS formula, and we've adjusted it, and adjusted it, and adjusted it. And our EPS numbers came back really good this year. The problem is, is that our state subsidy has been reduced by so much, that you really don't see that. And I just wanted to point out that if you look on the summary sheet on, under local additional funds, you'll see that the additional funds that this community used to have to put in for our budget in '08, '09 was 1.2, over 1.2 million. And then in '09, '10, it was 1.0, zero, or one, one little over a million. And then if you look at last year's and then this year's, we've decreased it from over a million to 748,000. And then this year, with all the reductions and things that we made, we have it down to 536. Now, the problem is, if you look up at the top, the state contribution has declined, which means that the actual required local contribution has increased. But I, I said last night, and I'll say again, that if we hadn't looked at our EPS, Essential Programs and Services formula, and really worked with positions and student enrollments and things, I can't even imagine what our school budget would be like. Because I, I keep thinking that we're gonna see, you know, all the, and I knew we would see some reductions in our, on our ED279, which is the form that they send from the state. Unfortunately, we're not seeing it in the bottom line, and that is unfortunate, 'cause I will, I'd like to commend the school committee and, and members of my staff, directors, and administrators, for all the hard work that they've done on this. We're not seeing it yet, but I will tell you that eventually we will, once things, you know, when the economy comes around and our state subsidy starts to increase again. Because enrollment is up at the, in the Lisbon School Department. We actually, I think last year, somebody had asked me during one of the hearings what our enrollment was. It was 1,250, what we projected, and it's actually over 1,300 right now. So we have an increase in enrollment for whatever, for whatever reason. So things are looking good, and hopefully, when I'm done with this presentation, whatever questions you may have, I have included my contact information for any of you that would, if you have questions, please feel free to, to contact me. Just over, just not over the next week or so, 'cause I'm gonna be on vacation, so. If you send me an email, I probably will respond, but other than that. This, our current budget, or what you have in front of you, is actually, has changed significantly since February. We have over $467,000 in reductions in this budget. The majority of them, or 283,000 of those were a result of budget cuts that we made on our end, and there was $184,000 change in the state subsidy reduction. One of the, one of the things that has helped our budget this year is that we have, we have $157,503 in the job stimulus bill that, that we received, that has to be used for saving jobs and positions. Now, that money has to be pulled out of the actual budget and treated like a grant, and one of the things that I've told the school committee, and I'll let you know that even though we have that money this year, that money is not available next year, and that money would need to be added back into the budget, or would, would have to be considered to be added back in the budget. Otherwise, positions that we have in there would need to be cut for next year, or the following year. So the job stimulus money has helped us out significantly. The governor's proposed budget has helped us out significantly. However, those things are all pending approval, and I'll get to those in a minute. But, so, we currently, we currently have a decrease. We're, we're less, our budget right now is, is less than flat. We actually came in lower than what our actual budget was last year, by about $122,000. That's where we are right now, which is about a 1% reduction in our overall budget from last year. However, because of the decrease in state subsidy, we are still $168,298 away from having 0% on the local taxes. That, that's, you know, 100, we're still 168,000, but we were a lot further away than that in February. So again, I'm still feeling very confident that we'll be able to get there. We have, we've discussed various things, sharing resources with the town and local schools, and we continue to pursue that. And I know tonight, I believe there's gonna be a proposal for, for us to assist you in some of your management or services here and, and on the town side. This doesn't increase or decrease our budget, but I know it helps out the town side, so it is a decrease on your side. So those are the types of discussions. We've, we've had multiple discussions over the last few months and last couple of years about that, and I think now is probably the perfect time for us to, to work together to help each other out. Some of the other things that have, has assisted the school budget is that we have received multiple retirement letters and resignations. And so what we've done is, the majority of those positions, we have not filled, and even though it's, we're asking our staff to pick up those pieces or those responsibilities, we are still in a position where we're not gonna, we're hoping to not have to cut very many positions, if any at all. We do have, there is potential for some loss of staff, but that's mostly related to certification and certification requirements and staff assignments. So we are hoping to avoid that, but again, that is, that is a possibility. So I don't wanna stand up here and say that we're not gonna cut any positions, but until we get all these pieces followed into place, then we would have to, hopefully, we, we will not, but there is potential for that. In our goals for this year, we're to maintain all our existing programs and services, and this budget does have, does maintain all of our programs and services. We talked about consolidating resources, that's a goal with the town and local, other local schools, and we've done that. Our EPS formula, I've already talked in length about that, and our, the ED279 numbers, the preliminary numbers that came in, and, and how good our, we are either at or below our, the EPS numbers that the state gives us, with the exception of just a few areas, and, and one in particular is the nurses, and we've, this community has always supported having a nurse in each one of the buildings, so we, we understand that. We have a decrease in state subsidy that we're dealing with, and the federal jobs bill, which I reminded you that that is money that's gonna be going away. When you look at this, and I've gone over this with the school committee, but I added a couple of, of items here that probably will, might jump out at a few of you. When you look at our line. When you look at our line-by-line items, there, there are some increases in there. We, we had, we had more increases when we actually presented this in February. However, we felt we would remove those from the budget, try to buy those with the existing money that we have. We were holding on to money for the middle school boiler and hoping that the boiler wouldn't, would make it through this winter, and we're getting very close. So we, we hope to put, there was some equipment that we had on our original budget that we've removed, and if we can afford to pay for it with this year's money, then we'd go ahead and do that. We didn't want to add it into next year's budget. So we'll try to buy or purchase things with this year's money, now that we know that the boiler, knock on wood, is going to make it through the season. Adult education, it's one thing I always forget to talk about, and I know when I, when I use our numbers, the adult education's always at the bottom of the school budget, but there was an increase in adult education, and I, over seven thousand of that was because of their reduction in state subsidy. So just, that's one number that might jump out at some of you, why the increase. We did add money for, one of the, one of our priorities in our, the school committee goals is to maintain the facilities, and what we've put in is, we put in ten thousand dollars to, there was already money in the high school budget, but we put in matching money in both the middle school and the community school to do work, replace whether it's furniture or things like that, just to have a maintenance plan to, to keep, keep things going at all three schools. One of the things that we did do is, we originally planned to have money from some expiring bonds moved into debt service for a potential, for a potential bond. We have since taken that off the, off the agenda, and we, so in order to utilize that, that money, we moved it from debt service to purchase services under the middle school. So you're going to see a decrease in one and an increase in another, but it's not, it's not new money. It's money that was already in our budget. We just needed to move it so that we would be able to use that to update the, update the boiler at the middle school, which we are hoping to, we're in the process, we've talked to the facilities committee, and we talked to the school committee, and we selected an option on what we would do for repairs at the middle school, and we believe through stimulus money and existing money in our budget, which this money is included, we would be able to make those repairs without going up to a bond. So that is, that, that's good news, and again, it's, you'll see that decrease and increase. I just wanted to explain that ahead of time. The areas of potential savings and costs, the first one is the proposed state budget. There's, I, I met with the new commissioner of education this morning, and there is starting to be some, there's some people opposed to the current proposed budget. So if the budget is changed at all, there's a good chance that our funding numbers would be changed as well, because for instance, the retirement proposal and the money that would be put into retirement, additional money that we, we put into retirement, which the state wouldn't have to pay, is money that they would use, portion of that, or a good portion of that would be used for education and other, other funding, and that pending the budget being approved, which couldn't, may not happen until May or June, depending on how things go, that will impact our bottom line. And quite honestly, after listening today, it sounds like that may be, that may impact our bottom line negatively, so we'll have to look at that and see what those changes are. The, another item that's, they're trying to, they have current legislation on is the consolidation penalty. As you know, Lisbon School Department, we, we went through the whole process, and we actually met the, the new law about consolidation. We became a donut hole. A lot of school systems didn't, a lot of school systems did, and there were supposed to be penalties for those school systems that did not consolidate. And last year, if you remember our budget, we had, I believe it was around thirty-seven thousand dollars that we were supposed to receive in additional money from the penalties because we did consolidate. And that's, right now, it's in legislation where they're trying to make consolidation from years past be, be voluntary. So that's meeting support and opposition, because the schools who felt they were forced into consolidating, backed into a corner, are not happy about the fact that now they're hearing that these other systems are not going to have to pay that penalty. So that, that could, that would impact us positively, because we would receive additional money, but it doesn't, doesn't look very good at this point. We look closely at our contracted services. Any savings that we can have there, there's potential for savings in our contracted services. We negotiate with people each year, and I, I've found it much easier negotiations, or negotiating with people the last two years versus probably years past. Also with the middle school, we were, and high school, we're looking to convert them over to natural gas. We received our original fuel bids, and I know that it was over a dollar more per gallon just on their quotes. So there's potential for savings there that would be, that, that would help offset our budget. We have budgeted in our lines for insurance, ten percent, and hopefully, that will come in less than ten, but I'm hearing different, and if it does come in less than ten, any percentage, every percent is around twenty thousand dollar savings. So there's potential for some savings there. However, I've heard numbers as high as nine, and I know, I believe you have nine percent budgeted in your, in your lines. The, we currently have six kindergarten teachers, and that's an area that we thought if, if enrollment ever did decline, that, that would be the first, one of the first areas we'd see it. However, we currently have fifty-seven students already enrolled for kindergarten, and we usually, we've been averaging right around a hundred or, or more. So we have April and May meetings, so we will not have solid numbers on our kindergarten enrollment until April, May. Sometimes over the summer, we get a number of registrations as well. With the governor's proposal on the retirement and the penalties for those people who retire early or retire after next January, we feel that, and a lot of systems feel that there's going to be a number of retirements between now and then. And there's also, if there's any resignations, and we can fill those positions with our existing people, like we've done so far, I feel that that will assist this budget as well. And I, I'm pretty confident, based on conversations I've had with a number of people, that there are more people considering retirement just because of the penalties that they would face if they, if they not, they're still in the system after January of next year. We've already completed a transfer, and that money would be used now that we're hoping the, or the boiler will make it through this winter, that that money could be used to offset not just the replacement in the gas line, or installation of the gas lines, but could offset some of the equipment costs or proposals that we had in our original budget. And although we have really a, a large portion of the reductions that we made were a result of us looking really closely again at our transportation costs and how we can do things more efficiently, there's still, we're still working on a final schedule with staff, and there's still potential for some savings there. So I know that when you look at it and you see a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, it's a lot of money. However, I can assure you that I, I feel, still feel confident, even after hearing the commissioner today, that we should be able to get to a zero percent within the next few months, once we get our more, more numbers in. And we, our school department feels very confident that we will be not just a flat budget, but we will be a zero percent and not, there will be no impact on local taxes on the school side.
Any questions from council? Go ahead, Roger.
When we built the community school, we went with natural gas, and we got a real big surprise on the fuel bill the first couple of years. What has changed to make the school decide to go all natural gas now, or to have more natural gas?
Just the, I know that they have formulas on, and Kathy probably can speak on this in more detail, but the, the cost savings are, are pretty significant, especially at this point. With the volatility of the oil market, natural gas is, you know, they used to be pretty close, maybe, maybe four or five years ago, they were similar, but now there's a big difference between oil and natural gas. And they're, you know, the, the line goes right in front of the high school, and we're, we're trying to work with the natural gas company to have that line installed for free to the high school and then run it to the middle school. But to answer your question, we believe there's significant cost savings, and you can also lock in on prices for a number of years. I've, I've heard as, as many as five years, whereas oil, we have to, every year, go out to bid. And it's worked in our favor some years, but I also know, when I first came in, we were buying our fuel from a local gas station because it was about two dollars cheaper than what we had gone in for a bid for. So we had to pay the penalty, but we still saved a dollar or more per gallon by buying it locally because we were locked in at such a high bid, or a high number.
I do have some.
Yep.
The, the other aspect about natural gas is it burns much cleaner than oil does, and it's less maintenance. So that helps save the district money in that aspect, too.
May I add to that also? One of the things that they're looking at, Roger, is with the efficiency programs they're looking at, it's not just much for the heat. They're actually talking about natural gas in the kitchen and, and some possibility of not just having just one large boiler, but able to heat other areas in the school separately to try to save more efficiency. So it is part of a, it's, it's nothing that's just pulled out of the blue. It's actually, many of the engineers have looked at it and tried to put together a whole energy efficiency program for long-term, that natural gas may help. And I agree, at certain times, there's actually been some, some big range in prices, but I mean, overall, most of the people look at it and think that there's a big energy savings by going with natural gas and using the benefits of it.
The only reason I was, I questioned or even just even brought it up was that at the beginning of the new community school, remember the significant ridiculously high bill we had? And I just wondered what had changed from that point, that's all.
Roger, I believe I can add some light to that, just from hearing reports during the school board. The company that had installed that, most of the companies that were hired were out of state and have since gone belly up. Because of bid processes, you have to go with companies that give the lower bids, and those were the ones that were selected. When we purchased, or when we started a contracted service with Siemens to do our, our performance on our burners and heating, they were able to do a complete kind of diagnostic on them to tweak everything that they needed to, to make the burner at LCS work more efficiently. So we have seen decreases in the bills from when it first opened to current times. So the systems have been worked on to work more efficiently than they were set up to do.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from council? Thank you, Mr. Green. Appreciate that. Steve, it's your turn next. All right.
Here's this.
Okay. Close that mark?
Mm-hmm. Go ahead.
Okay. This year is probably going to be our most difficult year we've had in the last four budgets I've done here. Many for the same reasons that you heard from Mr. Green, revenue shortfalls coming out of the state office. And we're going to present this from a, more of a revenue-driven budget, more so than it has been in quite a few years. And Jessica and I are going to cover different aspects of it, so we'll get started. Once again, the management goals and the team was to hold the tax rate if we could, balance the level of service with what we can afford and what residents are requesting, with a focus on at least maintaining or trying to improve the level of service. And again, like Mr. Green had said, collaborate with the school department to find savings. We've done that. We have some things that we're going to be proposing through the process. And to continue our infrastructure improvements, we've made vast improvements to our infrastructure over the last few years. We'd like to try to keep moving forward on that and provide a workforce and environment that is healthy and productive. We did a survey, I should say, Mr. Bickford was the driving force in getting the numbers. We had just under three hundred responses to what was the most important service that you received and what was the least important to you. And if you look at the chart from the bottom, the first green color is the number one choice, what was most important to the people who submitted. And the fire department, police department, and school department were the top three choices, and it varied throughout. So I think for the small number compared to, well, large number compared to what we had last year, we only had twenty-five, roughly twenty-five people respond last year. This year, just under three hundred, so it gives us a little bit better feel for what the public is looking for and what they find important. We're blocking a number. For this particular budget, the total budgeted revenues for this particular budget would be, what was required to operate would be seven million, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight. Out of that number, sixty-three point three-two percent would come from tax bills, and thirty-six percent would come from non-tax revenue, which includes fees that we collect, revenue sharing, excise tax, things like that. So it's very weighted. The non-revenue changes that we're seeing in this year's budget, we're seeing our revenue sharing increasing thirty thousand. And when we get to the end, you'll see that that's a number that is currently coming out of Augusta. It could change. Right now, we are at seven hundred and fifty thousand for revenue sharing. We're supposedly going to get thirty thousand more, and that actually could go up or could go down, depending upon what the legislative body does with the revenue, you know, budget that Mr. Governor LaPage has. We have seen revenues increase in the rec program by twenty thousand, and we are looking to reduce the use of surplus this year by a hundred and fifty thousand. We've seen a drop in our interest, investment interest by ten thousand. We also had budgeted seven thousand last year for the Durham Animal Control Officer. Halfway through the process, they decided we were doing a pre-deem process. They chose to try to go out and find their own person. They've come back to us again this year to talk about it, and we'll have a better answer on April second, if they're going to do that after their town meeting. The Eurip, which is a rural road, comes from MDOT, has dropped by six thousand, and some of our miscellaneous revenues we've seen drop by four thousand. So the trend is we've seen decreasing revenue overall. And if you look at where we've been from oh nine to what we're predicting for the two thousand and twelve budget year, you can see what the, it's been declining steadily, as has revenue sharing. We're hoping that the revenue sharing will climb, but again, that's a sign of the economy and what goes on in Augusta. And again, excise tax, we, we had a bit of a scare last year. We thought that if a bill had passed, that we would have a considerable drop in our excise tax. It failed, and it stayed fairly flat, and we actually did better than what we had budgeted. But we're seeing that, I think, stay flat as, and we are expecting not to grow much The department request, when we first started the budget process back in December and January, I asked the department heads to not include a wage increase, because we haven't been to, we had not been to the council to get goals yet, so we left that out. We've had insurance increases. We put in the paving, which was a 198,000, you get 6,338,696. I'm recommending a 1.75% wage increase to the employees. We've seen insurance decreases. The matching funds stayed in. Full-time communications positions stayed in. Reduction in wages and overtime, again, temporary. Part-time physician in the tax department. Remove the paving. Part of that is oil prices driving that a bit. To do some department consolidation is on the table. And loss of six full-time and two part-time physicians across the board. And a reduction in the fire department capital reserve request. And once again, we put the bond back in, interest only. So these are my recommendations. Oops, okay. In the bond initiative, what we're talking about is, slap you, the MTM building. And these are the things that we'll get into discussion as we get into these departments. The roof has been leaking considerably over the last few years. Again, we're looking at making the recommendation to finish the windows all the way around, to tighten the building up, make it more energy efficient. Complete the revaluation in a two-year period, 320,000. The ET Smith siding and electrical work, we've been putting that off since I've been here. It really is at a point where we really need to do this. The public works, again, the Fisher Road Bridge needs to be replaced. That's coming from the MDOT. And again, to come into compliance with ADA is to put on the small addition on the public works garage. And we think we can do it for less than that, but this is a number that we were given. And then the 15,000, we may pull that out. It's to replace some carpet that is just not in where carpet should be, and replace it with tile in the police department. So it's an $825,000 bond. We do it over a 10-year period. It keeps us, when we do our revale, it keeps us within the timeframe that all the data that we have will be current after 10 years. And the interest rates are reasonable. If you did something like this, in 10 years, all your projects would be done that you've been putting off for a long time. Okay. And Jess is going to pick it up from here and talk about the difference between municipal and county and school.
So this slide is, I don't know. This side is breaking down the expenditure by municipal, county tax, and school department. So for fiscal year 2012, we're projecting municipal expenditures to be $6,338,696, as Steve showed on his last town manager recommendation slide. The county tax is reduced by $5,680, bringing it down to 574,000. And the school department is currently projecting $13,937,754. As you can see from this, revenues, we're expecting our revenue, on the municipal side, we're expecting our revenues to decrease by almost $184,000, bringing us at 2.6 million. Currently, the school department is at 8.5 million, which is a decrease for them of 298,000. And as Steve mentioned, we're proposing a decrease in the use of surplus of 150,000. What this means is it leaves us with a tax levy of $9,852,063 at our current valuation of 465 million, leaves us with a potential tax rate of 21.75. Again, this data is up to date, as of today, but it's subject to change with how the budget process goes. But this is what you would be looking at right now if things were to stay as they are. And to break that down, what this means on a total town budget is our town and county expenditures decreased 15,000, or 0.22%. The non-tax revenue decreased of 184,000, or 6.6%, leaving us with the town and county portion of the tax rate increase at 19 cents, with the town rate being 18 cents and the county tax being 1 cent. From a school department perspective, their expenditures decreased 118,000, or 0.84%, and their non-tax revenues decreased 298,000, or 3.4%, leaving their portion of the tax rate increase at 57 cents, as it currently stands. So the difference between the tax rate of 21 this year to 21.75 is made up of 19 cents coming from the county and town side and 57 cents on the school side. But as Rick Green was stating, they're working on their numbers, just as we're continuing to work on our numbers. This graph here shows the spending trends over the last 10 years. It's a little hard to see up there, but you can see the projection. The school department back in 2000 started around 11 million, and they've increased just below 14 million to date. The municipal budget has remained fairly flat over the last 10 years, you know, within a $2 million swing over the last 10 years on our services that we provide, as well as the mill rate, the county tax staying fairly flat over the last 10 years as well. This is a chart to show the Lisbon Mill Rate for the last 10 years. You can see that back in 2000, 2001, we were at 24.25. And over the years, we've gone up and down minimally, with 2009, 10 being at 2550 and this last fiscal year being at 21. You can see that with the 80% of valuation, moving to an 80% of valuation decreased our tax rate to 21 from 25. The bottom slide shows the current mill rates of surrounding municipalities. You can see, starting from the left-hand side, the first six towns are at 100% valuation, and you will see that their tax rates are all below $20, most of them being below 15. The municipalities that are not at 100% tend to be higher, right around us, which is between 25 and our current mill rate of 21. This is just a graph to visually show you the town, school, and county tax levy proportion for fiscal year 2012. You can see with that projection that the school is making up 55.37% of the tax levy, with the municipal budget coming in at 38.8. Of the town tax allocation, which is the towns, this is the towns' portion of the tax levy, which is taking that 6,338,696 in town expenditures, plus the 574,198 in the county tax, minus the 2,616,300 in non-tax revenues, coming down to this 4,296,594. So this is, this is what makes up the net of our expenditures with our revenues. So the biggest chunks of this pie are public works coming in at 1.6 million. They make up 38% of the tax allocation. With police, I should note that public works encompasses solid waste, winter public works, hydrant rental, streetlights, the town engineer, and public work budget. So that's a fairly large public service budget. The police department is coming in at 1.1 million, or almost 26% of the tax, and that includes police, animal control, and communications. And then county tax is making up 13% at 574,000. And I think you can read the rest. I don't need to go through them all unless you need me to, want me to. The only thing I'll point out is general government is showing as a negative, as that is where our primary revenue source comes from. So that's where all our excise tax revenue comes in. So it's slightly misleading in that regard, that that's the department that all the revenue comes through. Looking at, excuse me, looking at just the expenditure side, which is the 6,338,696, these are the departments that make up the highest proportion of that budget. Public Works is coming in at 17%, which includes a hydrant rental fee that comes in at 4.2%. The police department comes in at 16.6%, with insurance following at 10%. With this, county tax is coming in at 8%, debt services at 7%. Solid waste and public services are both coming in around 6%, and the fire department is at 4.9%. So the total taxes to be raised to support the recommended budget of $6,912,944, that $6,912,944 is the total of the town expenditure and county taxes. So that's why it appears different than the town manager recommendation, but it includes the county tax portion. Of that $6,912,944, 19.8% of that is, of that money raised from taxes pays for your assessments and debt service, including hydrant rental, debt service, and county tax. So 1.4 million pays for those services that, unlike the operations of the town, cannot be amended or cut. The public works, public safety, and general government make up 77.7% of the budget. So that combined with the 19.8% of the assessments make up 9, almost 98% of your total budget. So the three biggest areas of your municipal budget are general government, public safety, and public works. So the next slides will take you through those three big areas after I go through this slide. These are the budget trends of the last three years for those three big departments. General government, you can see there's been a slight increase over the last four years, moving from 28.8% in fiscal year 2009 to 30.5% in the projected 2012, with a decrease in public works going from 27.9 down to 25.7, as well as police decreasing from 17.7% in '09 to 16.6% in 2012. And public services remained fairly flat, right around 6%, as well as fire, which remained somewhere between, well, just under 5%. So general government makes up 30.5% of the budget. Of that 30.5%, 46% is your insurance costs. So that's the big blue piece of the pie right there. 27.6% is made up of wages, and 18% is made up of contracted services. Everything else totals less than 10%. So the three biggest areas of general government, which again, only makes up 30.5% of your budget, is insurance, wages, and contracted services. So within general government, you're looking, we're proposing a total budget increase of 66,165, or 3.3%. This encompasses a wage decrease of 54,500, an increase to contracted services of 115,000, which is primarily due to a reappraisal of building costs from all other departments. We combined all town building services now under town building account instead of having them be with the individual departments, as well as technology services and assessing services that are currently being contracted out due to loss of staff. And we will also have a decrease in insurance costs of 28,000, which again, under this proposal, proposed budget is, the decrease is due to reduce staffing levels. So as I just mentioned, this is also encompassing staffing changes of three full-time positions. Looking at public works, they make up 25.7% of the budget. And again, that includes public works, solid waste, winter public works, hydrant rental, streetlights, and town engineer budget. So of that 25.7%, 32.8% is wages, 18.4% is contracted services, 15% is supplies, and 16.6% is hydrant rentals. So those are your big expenses within public works. We're proposing a total budget decrease of 84,064, or 4.5%. This is encompassing a wage decrease of 69,000, contracted services are decreasing 26,000, again, primarily due to the transferring of the cost to the town buildings budget, supplies decrease of 12,000, and an equipment increase of 42,000, which is the 50,000 in paving for Route 196 matching funds, offset by other decreases. This also encompasses some staffing changes, which encompass the reduction of two full-time positions and one part-time position. Looking at public safety, they make up 21.4% of the budget. And then you dramatically drop to 8% is equipment and 6% is supplies. Everything else is less than 10%, totals less than 10%. So with this budget proposal, we're recommending a budget decrease of 44,570, or 2.9%. And that's made up of a wage decrease of 33,000, contracted services decrease of 7,000, professional development decrease of 6,000. And it encompassed staffing changes, reduction of one full-time position, and the addition of one dispatcher, which is a shift from part-time to full-time. So in summary, the municipal budget breakdown, you can see that of that $6,912,894, 53% are your wages and benefits. 11%, 11.7% is your contracted services. County tax makes up 8.3%. Debt services is 7.4%. Supplies is 6.4%. Your equipment cost is almost 5%. Your hydrant rental is 4.2%. Repairs and maintenance costs are 2%. All other expenses is .5%. And then your professional development is .5% of your total budget. So our wages, with this budget recommendation, we have a decrease in wages and benefits of 174,231, or 4.5%. That includes a net decrease in positions of six and a half. Our, we have a health insurance decrease of 2% due to an initial increase offset by participation changes because of the staffing changes. A life insurance decrease of 30% that was adjusted based on historic expenditures. And an unemployment increase of 30%, which is a rate adjustment. Last year, it was at .89%. And this year, we're at .96% based on an approximate 94 employee count. The equipment cap, we're budgeting for an equipment or capital increase of 65,000, or 23.7%, which is primarily made up of Route 196 matching funds for paving. And contracted services increase of 82,000, or 11.3% for assessing services and technology services due to the loss in personnel. This also encompasses a debt service increase of 20,000, or 4.1%, which is made up of an increase for the principal portion of the 2010 bond that we currently have. And it also encompasses interest savings, which is offset by the inclusion of the potential 2011 bond initiative. Looking at wages and benefits, they represent, again, 53% of the total budget. Of total employees, 40% are public safety, 28% are public works or solid waste, 16% are town office, and 10% are library or parks and recreation. So you can see, over the last four years, we've had a steady decline in staffing levels. adjustment. Last year it was at point eight nine percent, and this year we're at point nine six percent, based on an approximate ninety-four employee count. The equipment cap, we're budgeting for an equipment or capital increase of sixty-five thousand, or twenty-three point seven percent, which is primarily made up of Route 196 matching funds for paving. And contracted services increase of eighty-two thousand, or eleven point three percent, for assessing services and technology services due to the loss in personnel. This also encompasses a debt service increase of twenty thousand, or four point one percent, which is in, made up of an increase for the principal portion of the 2010 bond that we currently have. And it also encompasses interest savings, which is offset by the inclusion of the potential 2011 bond initiative. Looking at wages and benefits, they represent, again, fifty-three percent of the total budget. Of total employees, forty percent are Public Safety, twenty-eight percent are Public Works or Solid Waste, sixteen percent are Town Office, and ten percent are Library or Parks and Recreation. So you can see, over the last four years, we've had a steady decline in staffing levels, which Steve has spoken to many times in the past, yeah, past three years. And you can see from the bar graph that two thou, the decrease in 2010 from 2009 is due to the insurance change, primarily, some loss of staffing levels, as well as the change in insurance from the POSC to the POSB plan. The increase from 2010 to 11 is due to the one point seven five percent increase that was budgeted. And you can see the impact of the 2012 proposed budget that's being proposed to the staffing levels. And you'll take this?
Unknown scenarios and alternatives that council asked for options. Some of the things that we looked at, we're gonna, you could revisit the consolidation with the Water Department. That proposal, two years ago, was a savings in excess of a hundred and fifteen thousand. The Water, Ken Wells and I talked about it, and I gave them heads-up that this is something, is an alternative we were gonna propose again. As times get more difficult, we have to look at more creative ways of saving money. Consolidation of Public Works with Parks is an alternative. I'm not so sure that there's any savings there, but it's something we could look at. We could have a potential increase in raising cost of fuel. Gas is something that we don't put out to bid, so last, you know, we're looking at, we're always fifty cents under the retail price, so we're gonna have, probably have to bump that up to, at least to three dollars and fifty cents to cover our, and hopefully it doesn't skyrocket this summer. Governor Lapage's budget proposals, if it gets turned down, the estimated increase in revenue sharing would be one point six one million versus the seven hundred and eighty thousand. That could change things dramatically for us if that is the case. I don't know, I have, I've been in touch with Senator Mason and our, and Dale. They're staying on top of it, and they're staying in touch with me. It has MMA and spoke at the, at their hearings, and I still don't have a feel for what's gonna happen. And then there's another change that could possibly affect us, which is LD-79. It would change the base cost on excise tax to be only ninety percent, and is a loss of a hundred thousand dollars if, we anticipate if that was to happen. So there's a lot of unknowns this year. It's been that way, I think, the last two years. But these are some of the options that we'll look at when we head down the road, starting Thursday, to see what you guys would like to do. Any questions? On your, in your desk, on your desk tonight, you do have a schedule of what departments we're gonna talk about at specific nights. The first night, we're gonna try to get through some of the easier ones that are less controversial, and shouldn't take a lot of dialogue, so we can get right through it and then get into the meat of things. I left March 24th open. If you would like to move things up, we can talk about that on Thursday night. After two or three days of budget stuff, you may wanna take a break to sit back and think about what you have had, but if you'd like, we can also move that up. And hopefully, Thursday, we'll be able to get through the Finance Department and the Tax Department, where we have some recommended changes. So, and we can talk more on Thursday about some specifics and some requests that I have before we start down that road. Also, on Thursday night, we scheduled at the first part of the meeting for the council to talk about operating rules here. You wanted to do that in a workshop. I thought we could spend a little time on Thursday. In the beginning, from what I had heard council say, it wasn't any drastic changes, but hopefully we'll have a few minutes to talk about that, and then we'll get into the budget.
Sounds good.
Any questions?
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, Poila.
Is under Town Manager's report.
Just a few items. Again, I mentioned the council rules workshop at the beginning of Thursday night. On April 19th, CMP is going to have a representative here to talk about smart meters. They've hired the outside firm, Bernstein Shore, contacted me. They wanted to know when they could come before and hold the public and talk to the public about smart meters. They are scheduled to start putting them in in Lisbon, but before that, they wanted to, I'll get some information out to the, supposed to send me, and so you have that in front of you. I also had conversations with Unitel, the gas company that the school's been talking with about running gas lines up Main Street in Lisbon Falls. Again, Rosie Bradley had started down that path when we gave the, sold the school to Brunswick Housing. It's very cost prohibitive for them. They have a formula that they work with. The total cost of getting it there was a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. They don't see an immediate return on their dollar unless the municipality be willing to help them get there. I told them, I probably didn't think so, but we would definitely bring that to them. And that's all I have.
All right. Next item, Poila.
Is under Audience Participation. At this time, those in the audience who wish to address the council may come forward, use the microphone at the podium, please, and state your name for the audience here and at home.
All right, Mr. Fillmore.
Okay, my name's Larry Fillmore. I live in Lisbon. I wanna keep the clock going here. The first point is, I need to ask the Town Manager or you if the response to the 196 project went out to the state this past two weeks, or where do we stand on that? You were supposed to prepare a recommendation to the state. Has that been done?
No, it has not been completed yet. It has to come before the council, before I send it off to the state.
So it will be an agenda item on here?
I'm not sure it's gonna be an agenda item, but I think the council will get a copy of the draft, and they'll make recommendations if they'd like to change anything in it.
Okay. You mentioned in your presentation, and I raised my hand, Mark, but nobody recognized me when we asked if there were questions. It says, "In the surplus, you're trying to save a hundred and fifty thousand dollars." How much is in that fund at this time?
It's probably, on the average, the last, at the end of the last year, we had one point seven million. What that number refers to is what the council has agreed to put towards the offsetting the tax rate. Historically, Lisbon has used large sums of money, five hundred thousand at a clip, to keep either the tax rate flat or to decrease the tax rate. We have been historically using between two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand to offset the taxes. My rule of thumb is to try to use less and get away from using surplus to offset taxes. So we've been weaning ourselves downward, and this year, we're recommending a hundred and fifty thousand dollar decrease in use of that fund.
Okay. Well, that brings me to the original point here that I wanna make. I don't understand how come it's so difficult to do a budget when two of the three items on the budget are known items. The first one is taxes. You know how much taxes you're gonna get from the residents of Lisbon. Two is, you can call and get from the state how much revenue you're gonna get from the state. So there are two of the items, or you can get an estimate as to close.
It's so wild, though. It's really all over the place. I mean, that's what's been debated.
I mean, it's gonna be within millions, I'm sure. But that, those two factors consolidated should keep you within your spending. Now, every year, we've spent more money than we've taken in, and every year, we have to put it on to the taxpayers, another increase in our taxes. And last year, we went through this, and you did it again. And every year, you're increasing our taxes that are outrageous anyways. So now, we need to cut, you levered on us, a one point three two increase. But you didn't cut any of your budgets, one point three two. You didn't ask the people who are doing the budgeting to cut anything. You only asked them for their budgets. Again, we're spending more money than we're taking in, and that is not acceptable, because you're laying it on the taxpayers when you guys don't get it right. So we need to take a closer look at that and stay within the parameters of, and I know you can't do it per dollar, okay, but we should be paying the mill rate of twenty-one point seventy-five this coming year, okay, when we just did a great, big tax one. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Anyone else have comments in public? All right. Seeing that, we'll move on. And next item, Poila.
Is under Appointments. We'll take up the 2011 35A term limits for Board of Assessment Review.
Okay, now, Councilor Cody had asked me, Steve's asked you to explain what this is, rather than take it under consent agenda.
When you first looked at the ordinance for having a Board of Assessment Review, it was something that did not exist. It was in your charter, and you put together an ordinance, and you left out their terms. Okay, that's what this is. It's an adjustment. So you have a term for each person. You have three people who are appointed for three years, one, two at, two years, and one at one year. I think that's how it's laid on. And that, that's all this is. It's an amendment. So you have a term limit.
It's inconsistent with the other boards, pretty much, Steve.
Yeah, that, that follows the same kind of rule of thumb that Planning Board has and numerous other committees. You stagger it, so you don't lose that knowledge if people stay on.
So this would remove term limits?
Well, it's not term limits. It's just, it's setting how long their term is for. Like, council has three years when they get elected. When the Board of Assessment Review gets appointed, they'll want, some of them will be three-year positions, some of them will be two-year positions, and one will be one-year position. So they rotate, just like you do.
Kind of staggered, like, yeah.
Staggerism. So you don't have all new people coming in at once who don't have a real knowledge of what they're doing.
All right. Any further questions?
We'll need a vote to approve the establishment of terms for these members.
And you also have a appointment that expired, that you have to reappoint Richard Long.
Okay, so we'll take up first the vote on the term limits for Board of Assessment Review. Do I hear a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Do you wanna make the motion, Lori? Okay. You wanna second that, Fern? All those in favor? And opposed?
Order pass, six zero.
Okay, and now the application here.
Order 2011 35B, Board of Assessment Review, for a reappointment, one term expiring till We have one application, which is Richard Long.
Okay. All right. Do you have any discussion on this?
Has the, has the board met yet?
They are meeting March 31st.
So it'll be the first time they actually meet.
Worst time they meet, so nice to have a full board.
Absolutely, yep.
So do we have any discussion on this issue? Any questions, comments, anything?
Just for clarification, did you just say that there's a person that's already been on the board and?
He was, you already placed him on the board before. This is a term that expired in the, before we got the chance to make this adjustment. It's just a reappointment.
All right. Any comments in the public?
Do you have a motion?
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'd make a motion that we accept as an application.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor? And opposed?
Order pass, six zero.
Right, next item?
Under Counselor Communications.
I'd just like to commend our town for what they did on Saturday for the Hogan family. It was really heartwarming to, I had a very busy day, and I wasn't able to really attend, but I did go down to Extramar and sit across the street for a while, and it was pretty amazing what was happening there. And we should be very, very proud of the people of this town and surrounding communities. There were people from other rescue and fire departments that I saw while I was there, and it's just really good to see a community get behind a family like that. So, thank you all, Fire Department, Police Department, all the emergency service workers, and, and the people of the town. Thank you. You made us proud.
Friend, do you have something?
Yep, actually, I just wanna thank the school board for coming through with their presentation on their budget, and also a lot of work put in their presentation, too, for the town side of it. As you can see from the charts, I mean, the last, as Steve says, it's gonna be difficult, 'cause the last, what, four years, it's been a decline. I mean, we're being, decrease in expenditures in town for the last four years, and eventually we run into some binds, because there's only so much you can cut. So as Steve said, this year's gonna be a pretty trying year, and I think a lot of the groundwork has already been laid. I mean, it's, it's nice coming into a budget to see there's some, you know, some pretty good opportunities, some, to try to come through with a zero percent increase, which I think that was the goal. And I know the school's been working real hard on that. The idea of a zero budget sometime can be achieved, but that zero percent increase to stay with the same budget that we had, not the budget, but the tax rate that we had last year, I think is really important, because last year was trying, and I can't imagine going through another year of another increase. So it's gonna be tough. There's gonna be, anytime you actually do that, there's gonna be sacrifices, and unfortunately, the sheer sacrifices spread across the school and across the town, and hopefully, we can maintain the services at a point where people feel they're still being served the way they should. So I appreciate the upfront work, because it's a lot of work, I realize, from the school and from the town, and, and it gives us a lot to work with, and really, not a lot of work, work with, but a lot of stuff to look at. And, and hopefully, we can move forward and try to do the best we can for the citizens. But it's, it's gonna be without, the idea of maintaining is not an option. It's basically what, how much we need to lose this year, which is unfortunate.
Thank you, Fern. Anything else?
We gonna reveal any of this to the public?
I don't believe that was a, I don't know, let me see, it wasn't on the agenda, Roger. I don't know.
Well, that's a lot of people that are gonna be very interested in that.
Well, I can address this. We met with Brian McMaster, who is the Director of Investigations from the Attorney General's office, and I'll read the letter he sent. We held a meeting with him, with our attorney, and it was, I asked him to address it to Chief Brooks, 'cause his group did the investigation, part of it, anyway. "Having become aware of some confusion regarding the status investigation involving the 2007 CDBG loan to Atlantic Commercial Cleaners, I am writing to inform you that the prosecution in this matter was declined by this office on April 29th, 2010 because of insufficient evidence to prove beyond a reasonable doubt that any criminal wrongdoing occurred. The declination is memorialized in a letter from Assistant Attorney General Leanne Robin of the District Attorney Norman Crudo, a copy which I have recently provided to you and Mr. Eldridge. I apologize for the confusion, which was apparently a result of our not having been provided you with a copy of a letter dated April 29th. If you have any questions, please let me know." Brian McMaster.
Yeah, and that is regarding the Dan Feeney case. Any further comments from council? All right. I'd just like to say that we should all send our thoughts and prayers over to the people in Japan concerning what's happening over there, and what's still going on over there, and we should meditate on that and think about how, as much of our differences, and we've had so many things go on in this town that we think are the end of the world, the worst thing that have happened, but it's nothing that what's happened to people over there, where they lost their entire town in five minutes. So we should think on that before we get too angry at each other. All right. Next item, Poila.
Is an executive session, order 2011 36, to go into executive session for one MRSA, Section 405, 6A Personnel Matters.
So move.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor? And opposed?
Order pass, six zero one, six zero.
Six zero. Order 601, six zero.